Guys, all ready? Call the meeting to order, ask that you join us in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome. Thank you for joining us for our August Board of Supervisors meeting, either here in person, or we are live streaming by YouTube as well. If at any time you can't hear any of us, let us know and we'll adjust the microphones to make sure that you can. Agendas are available in the back of the room if you did not get one as you enter. There's also a sign-in sheet there, so we would ask you to sign in before you leave. The agenda for this meeting was posted at the building's entrance door on our website and on the township's Facebook page. As I said, the meeting is live streaming on YouTube. Recording will be available through the township's website. It will also be posted immediately on YouTube. And written minutes will be available after they are approved by the Board of Supervisors. We'll have two opportunities for public comment. After being recognized by the Chair, we'd ask that you step up to the podium, state your name and address before addressing the board and speak strongly into the microphone so that you can be heard. With that, we'll do self-introduction of the board members.
Dave Perez.
Jeff Rogers.
Art Rutledge.
Bob Brown.
Jeff Reynolds.
To my left is Todd Ziegler, the township manager. Wendy Brown, our recording secretary, is participating via YouTube. And we have excused our solicitor from this evening's meeting. So with that, we will go back to the agenda. First up on the agenda is approval of the minutes of our regular meeting in July.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any questions before we vote? We'll vote on approval of the minutes.
Aye.
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 If I vote to the affirmative, the meeting minutes for July are approved. You also have in front of you the treasurer's report. Interest still remains good, close to $10,000 the last month. Hopefully that'll stand for a while. Are there questions or comments or anything Todd wants to add specifically on the report?
I have nothing specific now.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second, two seconds actually, to approve treasurer's report. Any questions before we vote? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 If I vote to the affirmative, treasurer's report is approved. We've come to the first opportunity for public comment. I'll recognize our state trooper first, if you want to speak to us.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Confer.
Would you mind if you come up to the microphone, it would help for our secretary, that's fine.
Is this a fireman-police rivalry here?
My name's John Confer. I'm a corporate operator at a station. I've been a trooper here in the county for about 14 years. Over the last few months, most of the incidents we've dealt with in the townships come from Walmart, retail thefts, fights, things like that. We recently, just the other day, had a fatal crash down there below Walmart. Two vehicles were involved. A lady lost her life in that, and we handled that incident. Just looking to get, excuse me, over the stuff here again. Again, mostly Walmart. We do have a couple incidents up at Home Depot and Tractor Supply that involve deaths. If anyone has any questions for me about anything, I'm glad to try to answer them for you today.
I think when you were here last time, you gave us a warning about people stealing checks out of mailboxes.
Yeah, we did have that going on for a little bit. I don't think I've heard of anything recently.
Yeah, it happened to a friend of mine.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's real, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, you know, I tell you it's going on, it's actually going on. What I was trying to tell people was if they could just drop it off at the post office if it's an actual check.
That's what I do.
And, or just hand it right to your mailman. If you know what time your mailman comes, just try to hand it right, or mailwoman. Try to just handle, hand it straight to them so it's not sitting in your mailbox, so. But I don't think we've had any calls like that in any of the area we cover recently, so. Kind of comes and goes with the seasons, so.
That's good advice.
I know Todd has requested, when it's available, the report on the fatal accident as well as others that you might have. I think he sent that as a formal request so we can look at it to... You know, we've done a lot to that road. It's got slippery when wet signs, it's got no trucks on one end, and the speed limit is lower than what PennDOT actually recommended for the road.
Yeah.
But we want to see if there's anything common, anything else that can be done to the road itself. So when we get the reports, maybe that'll make some sense to us.
I wasn't out on the scene that night. I did speak to the lady's husband on the phone the next day. We spoke about how the road was probably wet from the rain, of course, and she was driving a Ford Mustang, which was rear-wheel drive, so not the greatest vehicle in the rain. And I guess there was a slight left-hand kind of curve in the road when this happened, so. You know, I don't want to speak too much on it because it's still ongoing.
Right, yeah, no, we don't want to...
Most likely she, you know, lost control of her vehicle and crossed over. What you got, you know, again, for the road surface, yeah, I don't know what to tell you.
Well, there's so many things, road surface, tires, you know.
Right.
Impairment of the driver, the car, there are so many things it can be that...
Yeah, you could have the best road surface in the world, but if they're going too fast or just simply not paying attention, it'll off the road, you know, it's, there's nothing you can really do about that, so.
So we have our attention to that road, and we've asked for some surveillance wherever it might be able to be done just because we know it handles a lot of traffic. And I do occasionally see a car opposite Prospect Circle, which is near Walmart or Buchanan, which has a pull-off site. So I know that when I think your group gets a chance, they do at least spend a little bit of time there.
Sure. If you guys want more of us sitting there somewhere, I mean, we can do that, I can make a patrol check for you for a little while. Again, I think it's just, it could be a combination of different things, or it could just be, you know, speed. Probably speed, speed's always a factor usually, so.
Yeah, we had our last time, we mentioned we do have the radar signs that we move around the township, especially if we get complaints. I think only twice have they shown a real speeding issue, and then we're able to share that data we have with your group. You know, that shows time of day and speed. I know one was near Susquehanna High School, and I understand that there was some surveillance there. So we'll continue to do that, just as we see a reason that it might help somewhere, so.
I mean, you still come down off the hill from the townhomes and you gotta hit, go across those railroad tracks, which I think kind of slows some people down. After that, it's kind of game on.
Well, those railroad tracks used to be really bad.
Yeah, I remember years...
I guess the good thing was that slowed people down even more, but...
Yeah, besides that, again, I think you all, most, everyone knows that, well, maybe not everyone, but Walmart, we get a lot of...
That's what brings you down here.
Yeah, I mean, people fight in the parking lot just because they say, hey, meet me at Walmart, and let's fight, so. We've had one or two of those calls in the last three months. And again, retail thefts and thefts just in general are a hot call there a lot, so. A couple of natural deaths in the township. I don't believe we've had any homicides or drug overdoses in the last three months in the township, so that's good.
Any questions?
That's good.
Well, we thank you always for coming and bringing us up to date. We appreciate that, and always we appreciate what you do to serve our community and those around us. So please pass that on to the rest of your troop back there. We appreciate what you do for us.
We thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Did I see another hand that wanted to address us? Come on up.
Hi, Linda Apuzzo, 16756 Mount Airy Road. Actually, my neighbor and I are here also to talk about Mount Airy Road and the crash and to ask for your assistance. I would say that in the last two years, there've been at least seven crashes on Mount Airy between the railroad tracks and Buchanan Circle.
There's actually been a few more, but go ahead.
Okay, because multiple times I've gone out there with chairs, with blankets, you know, helped people out of their cars onto the side of the road. Fortunately, this time, other people were there before I became aware of it, so I didn't have to see what happened. But I would just want to bring two points, you know, to your attention since you're thinking about doing something. Since the traffic circle was removed, and, you know, we all hated the traffic circle, but since it was removed, people are driving much faster. It's a blind, backing out of my driveway is blind. I cannot see anybody coming until I'm halfway out of the driveway. We had asked years ago, when the road was first widened, to have a hidden driveway sign put there, but nobody thought that was important. When the road was first widened, before it was widened, I mean, Phil probably remembers this, there were two driveways on my property. There was one, kind of, I guess, about 40 feet north of where my current driveway is. So that was a driveway that conceivably I could come in and turn around. There's no way to have a pad in my driveway because of the spring water running that runs across the street. So I'm stuck with a narrow driveway. What I've noticed is that at Tonah Road, where the stop sign is, the flow of traffic is mitigated, you know. We can come, be backing out, and unless people are pulling out of the townhouses, there are not two cars coming, bang, bang, bang. Where coming south from Walmart, there is nothing. So there may be three cars in a row. When we are backing out, and my young friend Julie, who came from Ukraine, I had to teach her how to drive. And do you know how scary it is to teach someone how to drive and back out onto that road? So I would say that probably half to three-quarters of the time, when we're halfway out the driveway and we start to see somebody coming down that hill, we're just laying on the horn. And what do they do? They just go around us. And if somebody's coming from the other way, you know, there's just this. So I personally think that were you to put a stop sign at that corner of Buchanan Avenue and Mount Airy, I mean, you have a stop sign on the other direction, the, you know, west side, there's a stop sign. But were you to put one there right where the circle used to be, I think from my standpoint, as somebody who lives on the road and has to back out onto that road all the time, I think it might, it might lower the probability of accidents. Most of the accidents have been up in that area, close to Buchanan Ave... Buchanan Avenue, or between Buchanan Avenue and my house. In the old days, before the railroad tracks were fixed and the stop sign went up, on the other hand, we used to have accidents the other way because people would come barreling down that road. They'd hit the tracks, they'd become airborne. One burst into flames like right by my fence, I don't know how long ago that was, 10 or 11 years ago. But right now, we seem to have them between my house, Kim's house, and Buchanan Avenue. So, you know, anything that you can do.
Yes, just a couple of comments. The circle itself was although a cause of accidents when it was there, so you know, it goes both ways. Couple of things maybe you should know, and I believe, Todd, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe we're allowed to use stop signs as to control just speed. There are rules that PennDOT has. In fact, we've done three speed studies, and they've not indicated a consecutive condition of speeding on that road anywhere. In fact, the PennDOT recommendation, when they did the speed study, was that we increased the speed by five mile an hour, which we elected not to do. But that was what they thought would be appropriate, but we did think different. But I think one of the things we're going to do is when we get data that we can from the state police investigations, and we think many of those accidents weren't reported. So if they weren't, then there'll be no data available to us. But if it was, we'll look at that, that might be helpful. You know, tell us about the condition of the roads, was it raining? We've had a number of things done. We've had our engineer go out and look at the surface of the road. He said there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. It's, you know, what it should be, and similar to any other roads through the township. We did put a slippery when wet sign up near Prospect Circle, so above that, to try to catch people's attention. I think we recently put no two trucks on the other end of Atonah and Mount Airy. So we're continuing to look at it, but I appreciate your comments. I mean, they're helpful to us as well. I don't know what we do. Probably today you wouldn't be able to put that driveway in there because of the site difference, but that is a bad thing. I don't know, maybe, maybe we could do a hidden driveway sign or something there, but...
Anything would help.
We'll let Todd in, we have a roadmaster in the township, our maintenance supervisor. He was on-site at that accident.
At the accident.
I was also, because I live right up the hill from there. And the road actually seemed dry, but there are trees, there are trees down where that accident happened, so it may, but... But that'll all be on the report that we get, so. I don't know, Todd, if you want to add anything?
No, I did make a note, we'll take a look at the hidden driveway sign.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And, and just, I mean, I know it says slippery when wet, but for some reason, and I don't know if it's the way the curve goes, it's easy for a car to skid out there even when the surface is dry, as you're coming down.
If they're speeding.
That's, no, if you're, even if you're not. I mean, because honestly, I go down to 25 miles an hour when I'm going down there, and I can still feel my car a little. Of course, then I get people behind me, you know, laying on their horns or whatever because, you know, they're in a hurry. So anyway, I just, I'm glad that you guys were already talking about it because that's why we came.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your comments, and our state police representative heard them as well, so. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the board at this time? Got one before you, Phil.
It's the same issue, but when I come out of my, well, when I'm turning into my driveway...
Can you give us your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Kim Wood. I'm at 16733 Mount Airy.
Yep, I know where you are.
I'm right where the accident was.
I know where you are, yes.
So the ironic part is, when my son-in-law, my son-in-law was at the house, and I have to look out the window, and I'm like, why are they all down in the woods? And I said, oh, they're looking for my mailbox that was hit the day before at the same exact spot. So my mailbox was flat. They all thought, I think a lot of people thought that the Mustang hit my mailbox. That happened the day before, an hour after my mail was delivered. That was crazy. So anyway, I guess my point is, people come up there. So when I'm coming from Walmart, trying to make a left into my driveway, the hill there needs to be mowed. I cannot see. So I can't see around there, which is another reason people can't see Linda blacking out of her driveway because the grass is, or weeds or whatever it is, you just can't see around that turn. And it's the slightest little turn, but it's just enough. And in fact, tonight my grandson came into the house and he goes, Mom, did you hear the horns blowing at me? I'm like, what happened? He said, I was sitting there waiting too long to make a left because I couldn't see if anybody was coming the other way. So everybody started blowing their horn at me. I mean, it's nuts.
People were impatient.
They are, they're crazy. But then I was thinking, if that curve, if, like that, it's, and the curve is like right at my mailbox. I'm terrified to get my mail because I know, and another thing that scares me is when people are walking on that sidewalk, someone's going to get killed because cars are always going up over that sidewalk, and the police are never called because they come up on the side, I'll hear a thump, and I'm like, mm, another car accident. Car's up on the sidewalk. Instead of coming back down so they don't scrape their car again, they'll drive up to the circle where it levels, and then they'll just drive through the grass up to the circle and then get back down on the road. So it's like, something's got to be done, and I'm wondering if that curve could be straightened a little so they don't come up around that curve, you know what I'm saying? Like, could that just be straightened at my mailbox? Come down a little bit?
Yeah, that's probably a very complex thing to do.
My husband always told me I make jobs sound very simple. But it's like, I don't know, I just feel like something's got to be done. And especially, we're talking about putting more houses on that road, so before you put 300 more cars on that road, we better get it straight, or straightened out or something. A problem figured out.
I can tell you, a straight road brings its own problems as well because you have even more speeding.
Well, yeah, but it's something about that curve. I don't know what it is. And I am, when I take my trash cans out, when I get my mail, I stay way back and I make sure there's absolutely nothing coming down from the track side before I go up and get my mail because we've gone through mailboxes like crazy, so, but anyway. Oh, and if that side could be mowed.
Yeah, I mean...
They used to keep up with that pretty good. It hasn't been mowed now for a while.
Okay, I made a note.
Is that on the right-of-way she's talking about, or is that...
Yeah, I'm gonna pull, check the right-of-way, but it, I'm sure it's in the right-of-way there, yeah.
Yeah, because they would always mow that.
So we can take care of that, okay?
Yeah, because that would stop just me being able to make a left, so.
Okay. Well, that we can take care of, I think.
All right, good, all right, thank you.
Well, thank you, we appreciate it. Phil, you're up.
Well, one thing, I was going to suggest the same thing she did, that...
Can you give us your name even though we know who you are?
Phil Robinson, Mandalane. I was actually going to say the same thing that she said, that right-of-way through there could be trimmed, and it would give a lot better sight distance down there. The, it may even be able to be contoured a little different because right now I'm sure it's real hard to do anything with it because I think it goes up real quick. And the reason for the curve in the road, the road was straight in design. The water main was installed straight, and there was a, an environmental issue, and we had to actually change the plan and put the arch in the road. So the road, original plan was straight, and we had the water main installed, and that's straight. And then we had to go back and arch the road outside of that, so, just a little history there.
Is that because of the marshy area off to the side, or...
Yeah, down there, there's like a little spring that goes down there, stuff. And that's why the road got arched. That's the only reason it got arched. It was, it was just an environmental issue, and it, the plan was originally drawn straight. Water main was installed. There were some inspections, and the road had to be arched. But I agree with the clearing of the right-of-way, that would make a huge difference.
Okay.
And you might even look at if it's possible, maybe change the grade right there a little bit. Five or 10 foot in, cut that grade back, and that would help.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Who's up, Brad?
Getting them all done early. Brad Dobberman, Shrewsbury Fire Company. I was not going to say anything, but I feel compelled to. So I sent an email to Todd. I'm not sure if everybody got a chance to see it.
I saw it, yes.
Okay. So I pulled the data for the last 24 months, and like she mentioned, two years, we responded to 13 crashes. In a .3-mile stretch of Mount Airy Road, if you center Buchanan Avenue, I took all the other crashes out of that data. So that's 13 within this far of that intersection. Five of those were rollovers. One was a head-on crash. Not counting this last one. Last month, there was a motorcycle, and most of the ones I've been on, it's been raining. I went and pulled photos from most of the ones I could find, which was maybe half of them, raining. The concern about it being speed, I argue against that because when we've been out on that road on more than one occasion, it's like walking on ice if it's wet. And that's away from the crash scene. I've watched police vehicles, when they go to move or pull out, the tires spin like it's ice. So what this reminds me of is, I don't know if it was four or five years ago, 83 just south of Exit 10, coming southbound. Remember when all the tractor-trailers kept ending up over the bank? PennDOT said the road surface lost its friction, whatever road terms they used, resurfaced that area, that fixed that problem. Till last week when one went over, but it was sunny and dry, so totally different issue. I know, I, I don't think it's all speed. I think there is definitely a slickness because just walking, I'm not speeding, and it is slippery when it's wet, so. I fought for speed management in front of my house all last year. I was not pushing this issue, but it's very, it's beyond very serious now, since somebody lost their life. And I don't know the answer because I don't know much about roads, but I would just urge you to look at solutions other than speed management because I truly believe that it's, the surface of the road is causing part of the problem when it's wet.
When's the last time the road was surfaced, Todd?
I'd have to look, four years, four or five years ago.
Four to five years ago, when the whole road was basically dug up. That was by Kinsley.
Has it been, nothing since?
No.
Now, Brad, you said about speed, you don't think speed. You really, I have a hard time understanding if you're going 30 mile an hour, even if you slide, that you would roll your car at 30 mile an hour.
I don't think speed, I wouldn't say speed's an issue every case because I know even my wife said she wasn't speeding, and she's like, I need new tires. I'm like, just got new tires. And watching police cars spin when they put it in drive and try to pull out, it doesn't do that, that doesn't happen on every wet surface, so.
Yeah, I'm not there, so I don't know what...
Yeah.
Because I have a Dodge pickup, depending how the gas, the back end's gonna spin because it's light.
But when, when we find it slick to walk, then I'm like, okay. I get it if it's oil from the accident, like that's, that's common, but I don't know. It just really reminds me of what happened on 83, just south of Exit 10 on the southbound side. Every time it rained, a tractor-trailer ended up on its side, and they went to that section, and whatever term they use, some coefficient of friction wasn't where it was supposed to be, and they dealt with that, and that solved that.
Okay. We'll have to get with Mike and our engineers and kind of take a look at that too, but we appreciate that input. I think that's about the house. Is there anybody else that wants to address us at this time?
Anyone want to go twice?
With that?
So we can open it up, they can go again if they want to.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm kidding, you're only allowed five minutes.
Okay. All right, we will move on with our agenda then. Thank you all for your comments, we appreciate that, and you're always welcome to come and comment to us.
It's gonna start raining soon. We could take this into the field.
I think the next thing is ordinances and resolutions, and we're looking at assigned modification requests. Todd, if you want to...
Yeah, I, let me share the screen.
I would like to start by apologizing for the confusion brought about by my company. Or the company that my company's using.
We did receive a verbal request for a sign modification for the temporary sign at Royal Farms. There are permitted four six-square-foot signs, so for a total of 24 square feet.
Which are up now.
Correct. Yeah, which, which if you look at two sides, it would be 48 square feet. They, they are up currently and they're compliant, but they would like to put up a larger sign. I did receive an application, unfortunately it was for the permit, for a permit for a sign and not the modification request. So technically, I received what we need to get, but it's not the proper form. So it is on the agenda, so if the board would like, you know, you can give this consideration.
I would ask, if I may, if the board could consider this on a provisional basis, pending receiving the correct form and the correct information as far as something very similar to the sign you have in front of you. That is roughly 18 square feet, three foot by six foot. And with the current configuration, that would actually be 36 square feet because it's two of those put together. It kind of makes a triangle, so if you're looking at it from the point, you're gonna see the whole sign. If you're looking at it from one direction, you're only gonna see one, and of course, the other way the other.
Todd, do we have any regulations that this has to meet? Does it meet, is it...
I, I mean, it's a modification, so the board can consider whatever it would like to consider, but Dave, if I'm under... Dave, if I'm understanding correctly, this surface here is eighteen square feet. Is that correct? And then with this side would be a total of thirty-six.
Um, it, the, the sign is roughly six feet across.
Okay, and three high.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, so the, the.
So it's roughly eighteen.
The, 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 the square footage of the sign, just one of those, would be eighteen square feet. As long as my math is correct. And this is temporary signage, um, until, uh, the site is fully operational, which point it would come down.
Do we have any limits on, um, timeframe for temporary sign, Todd?
We don't, again, that's, yeah, the way the ordinance is written, it, it has to do with the event, so this would be the opening of the store, which I don't know.
Which is currently scheduled for November seventh.
So the sign would come down basically when the store was opened?
Yes.
I'm just doing some quick math here.
So if the board so desires, we could approve that conditionally, that that's what basically comes through on the paperwork for it. Paperwork supports this basically.
When, what, what you're really doing a modification for is really one large sign versus four small. Because the four small signs, you know, they're six square feet. But, so you're looking at twelve.
Do they have to come out if the score is up?
Yeah. So you'd be looking at four of those, you know, double face would be forty-eight square feet. This basically double face, but just kind of fanned out is thirty-six square feet. So what you're really considering is whether you would.
Less square footage, but more condensed.
Yeah, it'd be one larger sign, but no smaller signs, you can't have both.
My argument is this is easier to see and doesn't require as much attention if you're driving by as to try to read each of the smaller signs. So from a safety standpoint, um, and as long as it's back far enough from the road, obviously it's not in the right of way. Or, um, restricting, um, you know, view along A fifty-one, um, that's what we're hoping for.
Questions, comments from the board? A motion from the board?
I am recusing myself.
I'll make a motion to give them a temporary permit to put this up.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second that would conditionally approve the Royal Farm side in front of us totals about thirty-six square feet on both sides.
May, may I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
Um, that's conditional on the application and the application fee.
Yes.
Right.
And also, do you wanna attach a date?
I'd just say opening of the store.
Opening, okay.
Yes, with those conditions, you're, you're agreeable with your motion, your second, okay? So with those conditions, are there questions before we vote? All right, we shall vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four vote, votes approving it and one abstention, so we have approved conditionally and Todd will make sure the conditions are met for the time.
Thanks, gentlemen.
All right, next item is, um, going into subdivision land development, security reduction at Heath, Coke, Glen, Todd?
Yeah, this is for a, um, Heath Coke Glen, it's for Phase Two, which primarily is Ascot Drive. That is a bond that we share with Shrewsbury Borough, both of our names are on it. The paving's been completed and I know it's been satisfactorily completed to Shrewsbury Township's meeting its supervisors' expectations. Um, and my understanding is based on emails I received from Shrewsbury Borough, I believe they're satisfied and believe everything has been, uh, completed as well. So just would need a motion from the board, um, you know, recognizing or authorizing the township to release the bond. And then Shrewsbury Borough, I believe, meets next Monday. Are they Monday or Wednesdays? They're Wednesdays. But it'd be next week, I believe. That they've already approved it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Questions or a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion, we approve the security reduction for Heath Coke Glen Phase Two at Ascot Drive.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to release the secu- or to accomplish the security reduction. Questions before we vote? We shall vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote to the affirmative, we have approved the security reduction at Heath Coke Drive. We move to just a reapproval of, um, a, a plan that's been approved, I guess just needs a little bit more time.
Yeah, the only thing we were waiting on was, uh, the, the last conditions have been met, we were waiting on the, uh, security. Uh, the improvement security. We did receive that just on, I believe it was yesterday, actually, Tuesday. So we need a little more time because the, the ninety days have expired. Somebody asked the board to, um, extend the, uh, off, sorry, the approval, uh, through September fourth. And that should give us more than ample time to get the plan recorded.
And our next meeting's what, on the third?
The fourth.
Oh, okay, so it's, it's through the next meeting?
Yes.
Yep. Make a motion to approve the reapproval.
Second. Second.
All right, I heard a second from both Jeffs.
I think it already passed.
Give it to the other Jeff.
I think Jeff, Jeff Reynolds was first, I think. Um, so we have a motion and a second to, um, just reapprove for another month till September fourth. Final six subdivision land development plan, sixty-one Harvey Court. Questions before we vote? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote to the approval, so that plan has been reapproved. We go to reports, managers is up first and Todd, I don't know if there's anything you wanna highlight?
I don't have anything in particular.
I think you did include, um, a form if a board member has something particularly they'd like to see included in the budget request for two thousand twenty-five. And you would like to have that back to you by September tenth.
Yeah.
I see. So you have that in your packet.
And the other thing, I do have it on the report that, uh, Shrewsbury Township's gonna be hosting an LTAP training here, uh, at our facility on November sixth.
And that's open to other municipalities?
Correct.
Right, okay, good. All right, you have the zoning officer code enforcement suing sewage enforcement report in front of you. Questions from anyone? And as usual, it's pretty detailed, covers everything and kind of what's going on. Any particular questions or anything, Todd, you wanna highlight?
No, I have nothing in particular.
Okay. You have, I think, the maintenance report. I think that came a far far out of the maintenance report, are there any questions regarding that? Or comments? Todd?
No.
I think that speaks for itself as well. Recreation Commission, I know they did, I don't think they've met since our last meeting, there's one scheduled.
There's one on, on Tuesday.
Right, one coming up next week. Fire and EMS, they did have the, uh, chase truck dedication, it was held at Shrewsbury Fire Company where the truck is gonna be housed. And it was pretty much hosted by, uh, Rose Fire Company, I guess. I was there and Bob was there as well, so I don't know if you have anything to?
No, I'm, I'm impressed the cooperation we have.
Yeah.
And I think they were pleased with what we ca- do with them.
That was kind of the theme of the, uh, meeting, I think, from everybody that spoke.
It was, state reps were there, so that was the.
Yeah. State reps were there and somebody from each municipality spoke as well as from the fire companies and, um. I said the theme of it was kind of the cooperation of the municipalities and the fire companies, uh, to accomplish that. It's a nice looking vehicle filled with all kind of gear and it's on the road now, so. I have the, nothing from emergency management, you have the planning commission zoning hearing board report. There are no questions. Uh, we did have a meeting of the, uh, short-term rental group, the ad hoc committee. And we kind of left that committee with Todd taking on the task along with our zoning officer Cliff Tinsley. Of putting together a basic ordinance to kind of get us started, um, with, with what we're gonna do in terms of any regulations. Is that a good summary? Jeff or?
Yeah.
Todd?
I agree.
Uh, and we did not have any sewer committee meetings. So I guess that brings us to supervisors' comments, you have, um, my list. Uh, I was at the Rose Fire Company, um, dedication, I did speak at that. And, um, was at the scene with Mike McCain short, McLean's, things shortly after the, um, tragic accident on Mount Air Road. We spent some time. Comments from any other supervisor, I guess a lot of people went to the ballgame.
They blew it in the ninth inning. Close it, then close it.
I love before that. Any other comments on anything?
Um, I've got one.
Go.
Uh, state police, uh, was just here, um, and talking about putting in cameras, uh, whatnot on A fifty-one to try to curb some theft and help with investigations and things of that nature. Uh, I don't think everyone was able to hear said discussion, but, um, he did provide us with some information. For a local company out of York, uh, that apparently is being used, uh, up and down the east coast. Uh, looks like everything from Florida to Maine. Locally, from what he said, Red Lion and Southern Regional, uh, all use, uh, this company as well. Um, and it's basically looking to put license plate grabbers or cameras with, uh, a high enough, uh, resolution to catch a speeding vehicle. Go pie instead of a blur, actually be able to see what that license plate looks like. I don't know how much it would cost. Um, my initial concern would be it's, it's gonna be more than we wanna spend. Could it help, could it be beneficial? Yes, certainly. But after speaking to, uh, the, um, I, I apologize, is he a lieutenant?
Corporal.
Corporal, I was speaking to the corporal who was here. Um, I, I was trying to give him a promotion, I'm sorry.
I'm sure he appreciates that.
A lot of the, actually, all three of the main ones that have trouble, Walmart, uh, Home Depot and Tractor Supply. All do not have very good exterior camera systems.
Right.
Uh, in order to capture to deal with this problem on their own. And if they're not willing to make the investment to protect their merchandise on their own property. Um, I doubt they're going to want to participate, um, and I don't really feel like we need to subsidize the, the township taxpayers by doing a forum. Um, so I mean, could it be beneficial, could it be helpful? Yes, by all means. And I, I, I think the information is, is potentially good, uh, but we would definitely need dollars and cents, uh, but, you know, before we could even, uh, start talking about it. But like I said, I'm more concerned about our taxpayers subsidizing multi-billion dollar or multimillion dollar at least companies. Uh, well. It's probably multi-billion.
They're in Hopewell, I think.
Um, who are unwilling to invest in their own security systems.
Walmart could certainly afford a camera.
You would think, and, and, uh, Home, Home Depot certainly could too. Uh, if, if they were so inclined and they could get them mounted on the building, very similar to this, uh, Royal Farms does it. Uh, which are able to, to reach out and touch, there's only one entrance in and out of that shopping center, you have to come through it. Um, and if you zoom in on that spot, nobody's getting, getting out of there without being seen unless you have your license plate covered or not, not there. In which case, it doesn't matter where you have a camera, it's not gonna catch anything.
Those two places are also in Hopewell Township.
True.
But I think it would be interesting just if Todd would do that, just, what are you talking about, the money, just so we know? Because we also have parks, we have cameras in, sometime we might wanna zero in, so it would be good to know what, what the cost of the camera is. That doesn't obligate us to do anything. I mean, we do have cameras that focus in on all of our major parks, what do they capture, license plate numbers or not, I don't know, but, but at least we have something there.
They're, they're, they're pretty, they're pretty clear, but not, I don't think they're crisp enough.
The movement aspect of it.
Probably if the car was stationary.
Yeah. And, and close enough, but distance wise, I know it won't.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt to know just what the cost is.
Yep.
It'll never hurt to get a little more information on the system.
Agreed.
But I'm, and I agree, it's, you know, it's something, if Walmart and M aren't worried about it, why should we worry about there the theft?
Yeah, now, would, would it be nice to take them off the street? Um, you know, have, excuse me, state police work with, you know, from what it sounds like, um, you know, Maryland state police or county. Uh, trying to get these people off the street because they're coming up here to steal from us and heading back south. Um, yes, it would be wonderful. But, I don't know, logistically.
More interesting, he said.
Concerned.
Said fights, where somebody says, I'll meet you at Walmart. I guess everybody knows where Walmart is. So.
Not far to go get Band-Aids and antiseptic.
You'll get all that stuff too.
They used to fight in up there at Home Depot, even killed it, guy got killed.
Yeah, that was at the traffic light, down, down the street.
And finished the fight, they started up in the parking lot.
Oh, oh, I did not realize, that's where it started.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, now, good comments, Dave.
That was all I had.
I appreciate it. You've got a couple of things under old business, Todd?
Yeah, both of these will be very quick, uh, the first one, this history made here. I just learned actually beginning of last week, the August parade that they're looking to put on this year, uh, is at the York Rev Stadium. But they're looking for municipalities to participate, uh, in a parade pre-game, but it cannot be with heavy trucks, equipment or anything. They want people to carry flags, banners, whatever, so we, we, I doubt that we will be in that. The, uh, but there is going to be a parade, but we have, uh, two years to plan that. August of twenty-six.
And we have a convertible?
Yeah. Uh, for the, for, uh, you know, for, for America's celebration, so, uh, we have time to, to plan that one. Uh, and as far as the banners, I believe last month, the question was whether or not hardware came with the banners themselves and it, it does. At this point, I think they're allocating two to each municipality, so. Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll get them and we'll figure out where to put them.
Okay.
So I had on that, uh, next item, the Glen Rock Sewer System, I had brought up last month about, uh, our responsibility to do, uh, repairs within the right of way. I have not had the opportunity to pull the agreement and research it, but I want to keep it on here as, uh, as an agenda item, uh, as a placeholder, so I don't forget about it. And I'll, I'll get that information for you.
Okay. All right. I guess you're on for new business too.
Yeah, this next one, um, actually, we had received, uh, an email from these folks. But also received an email from Judge Sweeney. Asking that the, uh, Board of Supervisors give consideration, uh, to next month passing a proclamation, uh, for Kindness Week worldwide. Which is going to be, I think it's November ninth through the sixteenth. And my understanding is. My understanding is that this is actually. This is actually a, uh, movement that started within, uh, I believe York County. If you look at their, uh, website, uh, it gives you a little background history. The gentleman, you know, was at Wise Market, someone returned his wallet and, and whatever. And actually, if you go down here and click, Channel Eight has a little news story on it and so forth, so. Uh, there's no obligation to us, but this gentleman's goal is to get at least all of York County, uh, to, to participate. And his goal is to make it, you know, a national, national movement.
Is, is it a, is it a day or is it a?
It's a week.
It's a week?
Yeah.
That used to be a country song, wasn't it?
I don't know.
Little, little expensive. Little kindness.
But, uh, I believe last year, the Adams County and the York County Commissioners, uh, did something last year already, as well as, uh, Governor Shapiro. So if there's, if there's no objections, I, we don't need any motion if, unless there's some objections, I'll put together more of a formal proclamation, uh, for next month.
Everybody okay with that?
Seems fine, supporting a.
Okay.
A, a local resident with a, a good idea for us to be nicer to each other, so.
All right, we'll let you do that, Todd.
Okay.
We have a store water operation and maintenance agreement, it's the typical agreement, right, Todd?
Correct. Make a motion to approve if you don't mind.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
And just to clarify, that's for the one-three-zero-two-zero Pleasant Valley Road?
And just clarify, that's for the 13020 Pleasant Valley Road?
Yes, for a new home, for a new home and a deck addition. Or home and deck addition, if you say.
All right, we have a motion and a second that we would approve the stormwater operation and maintenance agreement of Pleasant Valley Road. Questions before we vote? We shall vote.
Aye. Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative. That's approved. You have, uh, several pieces of correspondence. I don't know if you have questions on any of that. Seems pretty self-explanatory. Do you have any comments on any of it Todd?
No.
All right, if no questions, that would bring us to closing public comment.
What's the rose? Fire ambulance?
That's a, it's not a bill.
But they want 20,000?
No, they, they do that every year. Even when we just gave the, uh, $50,000 donation, they just always, it's just informational so that we know what quote unquote, our portion of the paid personnel was.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
So they're dividing the calls out, similar to how we allocate for fire? And how much did we donate last year?
50. 50,000.
Actually, that wasn't technically a donation. What was it? That was taxed?
Their last year was still the donation.
This, this year, this year we taxed. All right. So thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Anybody wish to address the board at this time? Again?
Last chance.
All right. If not, do we have a motion?
Motion for adjournment.
We are adjourned.
Send a coffee to Israel.
Got a question for you.